All right, just talking here, all right. Marco, let us know when that comes up.
Okay, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. First of all, I want to say good evening to everyone. At this point, I'd like to open up the Ballpark City Council Special Meeting. Today is June the 23rd. So at this point, I will ask council members, all the participants, we're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, ready, begin.
The allegiance to the flag.
First of all, I want to thank everyone very much for those that are participating and are hearing us live online. So at this point, I will go ahead and ask the Madam City Clerk to conduct her call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Here.
She is not here, she will be absent.
Mayor Prochan Paul Hernandez.
Present.
And Mayor Manuel Lozano.
Present, thank you very much. All right, so at this point, I will make a motion to excuse Councilmember Alejandro Avila, who did text me that she would be unable to make it today and would like to be excused. That is my motion. Is there a second? Second by Vice Mayor Hernandez. Any objections? See, now so moved. All right, so at this point, I believe we're going to have our city attorney or CEO say some words prior to us moving on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to say some things regarding the public communication, Mr. Mayor. The Brown Act requires that agendas for special meetings provide an opportunity for the public to address the body before any item on the agenda is considered. That's Government Code Section 54954.3. Unlike regular meetings, in special meetings, the Brown Act does not require public comment on non-agenda items. So in the special meeting, we will only be having public comment on the items that are on the agenda pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, City Attorney Mr. Tofoya. Our CEO, did you have anything you wish to share at this time?
After the, as we go into closed session, yes, I'll talk about the interview process.
Very good. So at this point, we'll go ahead and have our, Ms. Our City Clerk, Ms. Gina Mayala, read off communications that had been submitted to her office. So at this point, Ms. Mayala, thank you.
Hello, Mayor Lozano and councilmembers. My name is Jose El Placencia. That inspires us, the citizens. You know who you are. Today, each of you have the power to appoint the new acting chief of police. That with the people of Baldwin Park in mind. I hope and pray that you examine your conscience when choosing. I hope you will appoint someone who will work for a better Baldwin Park, someone who will work to empower the youth and residents.
Gina, I don't mean to interrupt you, Gina, but we can barely hear you. And can you repeat that, but can you speak louder?
Yes, can you hear me now?
No.
Mark, does she have her own microphone?
You want to speak into my computer? Okay, I'm bringing her online here to my computer. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, much better, thank you.
No, thank you. Hello, Manuel Lozano and councilmembers. My name is Jose El Placencia. I am a resident of Baldwin Park. I am absolutely outraged at the fact that you silenced the, us, the citizens of Baldwin Park. You know who you are. Today, each of you have the power to appoint a new acting chief of police. I hope and pray that you do that with the people of Baldwin Park in mind. I hope and pray that you examine your conscience when choosing. I hope you will appoint someone who will work for a better Baldwin Park, someone who will work to empower the youth and residents, not criminalize them. I hope you choose an officer that is adequate, not somebody who's going to collaborate with you to fund and support your interests. I hope you listen to us because clearly you all have worked to silence us. You have strived to keep us from knowing what you do with our tax dollars and funds. We are watching, we are aware, we are ready to hold each of you accountable. Jose El Placencia.
Dear Mayor Lozano and City Council, my name is Natalie Santiso and I live in Baldwin Park. I am asking that you reevaluate your decision on acting chief of police and that you adjust your general funds budget allocation immediately, invest money in community services such as housing, parks, education, transit, and more. I care about the budget because as a student who grew up in Baldwin Park, I've firsthand experienced the public school education system in this city from not learning about the local history of Baldwin Park, which was never afforded to me in my entire K-12 education, to the lack of supplies for public school. Our city needs to do better and use the budget for education over policing. I am looking at you, Mayor Lozano. I once earned a Neighborhood Appreciation Day award as a child, if you remember once running initiatives for students, but your vision for this city has changed. It's been static for years. It's disheartening that a lot went on this past weekend on social media, particularly Mayor Lozano's blocking of his constituents on Instagram. If you are denying voices of your constituents, which is unconstitutional, then you need to unblock constituents and read our public comments during tonight's city council meeting. Please do better, this community is watching and we will not be silenced. Fund services, not police.
Dear councilmembers and mayor, my name is Nabyana Ramirez and I have been a resident of Baldwin Park for the past 15 years. Since moving here, I have been very overwhelmed by the amount of work that has been done here. Every year, the mayor has promised big and better things and nothing has been done. Our community deserves more than a well-funded police department. I have seen how underdeveloped our community is and with all this money, we have the potential to be so much more. The children, youth, and families of our community deserve so much more. We need change. I'm concerned over the understating of the chief of police. We need someone who has new perspective and stands with the Black Lives Matter movement, someone who understands that change is needed in the way law enforcement conducts itself while on duty. We need to change the way we view the importance of law enforcement in our community and give more funds to help the community directly. We need to work together to make our city safe without relying on law enforcement. Mayor Lozano, I speak directly to you now. It saddens me that you feel like you have the right to do whatever you want. You, sir, are a public servant, you serve US, the United States, the people of Baldwin Park. Excuse me, you serve us. It's unconstitutional for you to be blocking your constituents from speaking the truth and speaking their mind. You should be leading by example by wearing your mask in public settings and practicing social distancing. You have been in office for too long and it's time to bow out. We need somebody who is willing to lead for the people of Baldwin Park and not someone who is money hungry and scared of change. Please pass a people's budget that defunds the Baldwin Park Police Department and invest in Baldwin Park children, youth, and families instead. Follow the model of the People's Budget LA, which is grounded in community voices and proposes a reduction of police funding from 54% to 6% and reinvestment in community services and health, fund services, not police. Thank you, a concerned citizen, Nabyana Ramirez.
Dear Mayor and City Council, my name is Amy Wong. I live in Almonte, but I visit Baldwin Park often to shop and eat with my friends who live there. As you make a decision appointing the acting chief of police, I hope you are listening to community members whose demands to defund the police have not been met yet. What does this chief's salary and pension look like? How are they qualified to be chief? There's needs to, there needs to be greater transparency and community input in city-level decisions like these, especially because it's taxpayers' money. State Controller Betty Yee's report of the city, which was published last week, states that the city terminated its chief of police in September 2016. The city then rehired him in May 2017 and in the year leading up to his retirement, raised his salary by $41,233, more than the maximum allowed for the position at the time, giving the impression of pensions spiking. How are US City Council ensuring this process of overpaying the chief doesn't happen again? This applies to not just the chief, but the entire police force. Thank you.
Dear councilmembers, in response to your public employee employment for acting, excuse me, in response to your public employee appointment for acting chief of police, I would like to acknowledge your arduous efforts to maintain the position of acting chief of police filled. Nevertheless, you must actively listen to the constituents you serve. The community of Baldwin Park deserves a true public process for a chief of police. In recent events, the leadership of the city has demonstrated a disregard for the people's concern and thoughts. True political process allows that and acknowledges critique. Our government is built on the mentality that public officials are for the people, by the people, and the Baldwin Park leadership must actively work to live those ideals. I'm calling on all councilmembers to allow for a public process for the position of chief of police. As pastor of St. John the Baptist Catholic Church, which serves over 10,000 families in the Baldwin Park community, I understand our city's needs and the ways in which our city government either meets or lacks in meeting those needs. Your role and duty must be guided by those you serve, the constituents of Baldwin Park. When you allow there to be a community-led process, you allow for the people's voices to be heard. You have a responsibility towards the residents of Baldwin Park. My hope and prayer is that the city leaders will engage dialogue and consensus, behaving government with the people of Baldwin Park. Sincerely, Father Michael Gutierrez, Pastor of St. John the Baptist Catholic Church.
To the Mayor and City Council, it's totally unacceptable that you all, except Councilmember Avila, ignored at least 256 or more of us who called for you to defund the Baldwin Park Police Department and then gave $100,000 more to the police department. With that being said, I hope that you all don't appoint a chief of police who will fulfill your interests. Listen to the people of Baldwin Park who voice their concerns. You are supposed to be community leaders and hear all of our concerns and that is, and that it's offensive that you, Mayor Lozano, said that the Black Lives Matter when you are not supporting their demands. Obviously, Black Lives do not matter to you because you refuse to make the changes necessary to treat Black people with care. Do not make excuses for refusing to simply have a conversation with all of us. It is very suspicious that you are not even open to that, which is the bare minimum. It seems that there are other interests at play. Shame on you for trying to silence the people of Baldwin Park. And to Councilmember Monica Garcia, we, the people of Baldwin Park, are not stupid. We know how to read and research the budget. We believe in the whole funding picture and the police receive too much funding compared to community services and school. Please research the People's Budget Los Angeles. There's a website included before you claim that we do not know what we are talking about based on the fact that you are older. Many people who made comments during the budget meeting are of multiple generational families in Baldwin Park. My family has three generations in Baldwin Park. How dare you use that as a premise to say I don't know how all this works? Keep in mind that we are reading and keeping up with the reports and allegations against you all. Do better and we will vote you, or we will vote you out. Kiana Martinez.
Hello, is the city council aware that there were over 100 people at the Baldwin Park City Hall protesting that day after the city budget was approved? KTLA covered it and I saw how ridiculous it was that the city approved 65.88% of the general funds to fund the police department. It's ridiculous because the city can't even balance their budget without controversy. Yes, we all read about how the city wasted hundreds of thousands of tax dollars on projects that were never built. One of jarring mentions in the state controller's report was how Baldwin Park terminated its chief of police in September 2016. It then rehired him in May of 2017 and in the year leading up to his retirement, raised his salary by $41,233, more than the maximum allowed for the position at the time, giving the impression of pensions spiking. You are within your right as a city council to appoint whoever you want, but you are all being put on notice. There is momentum to clean house and put order back into the city budget and government. Also, I've made a California Public Records request on June 18th for an itemized copy of the police budget. I have yet to hear back, so I hope the city clerk reads this because you have six more business days to get back to me. Thank you, warm regards, Andrew Yip.
Dear City Council, it is me, Brianna Rivera, again. Mayor Lozano must have been wearing some police-funded earplugs when we expressed for hours last meeting that we wanted the police to fund it. A few million is not enough when police funding still takes up more than half of the general funds. Telling us that there are only 24% of the total funds does not change the fact that 66% of the general fund is going towards PD, highly unnecessary. Blocking people who make you feel bad about your horrible decisions with the city's money will not solve anything, Lozano. Count your days in office because we promise to vote you out. The rest of City Council is not safe from our scrutiny and judgment either. What is the point of listening to public comments if you refuse to implement what we ask of you? You have a very small chance to redeem yourselves. The only way to make our city better is to defund the police. I mean, this is with the utmost disrespect. The only one deserving of respect is Alejandro Avila. Ever so sincerely, Brianna Rivera. That's all comment, Mayor.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. I want to first of all thank City Clerk Ms. Gina Mayala for taking the opportunity. Just want to say a couple of words, just to remind, the city of Baldwin Park is a 6.7 square mile city with 75,000-plus residents. And there's three separate entities in the city. The local government, which is the city of Baldwin Park. Then you have the Valley County Water District, the second. And then the third is the Baldwin Park Unified School District. So there's three separate entities. So it's important for us to know when people are saying to fund the education, we're for 100%. There is absolutely no doubt in that area. But the responsibility ultimately is to the Unified School District, whose budget is at about $100 million. So it's important for us to be focused in that area. We do participate with them in various programs which have benefited the city of Baldwin Park. And we've obviously seen that in the various changes throughout the city. So I just want to add that so that people are well-informed. And I also want to thank the comments that have been provided here today. We are and we will continue to move forward in reforming the police department and also getting input from the city of Baldwin Park. As we know, there are 75,000 residents in the city of Baldwin Park. And as elected officials, we were elected to make decisions, tough decisions, and decisions at times that people may not like. That unfortunately is part of how the local municipal government works. And some of you have made comments, if you're not content with those officials making those decisions that we were elected for, then you have that right to exercise your right come the following election. So I just want to add that for the record. At this point, any councilmembers wishing to share any information?
Mayor, yes.
That's my Monica Garcia.
Thank you. Shannon, I have a question for you. I know that there's been this 6% figure that has been thrown out. Can you tell me how many police officers we would be able to fund at 6% of our general fund? I know I'm, I know I'm asking a question, just throwing it out there. So even an estimate would be.
No, that's fine, I was just trying to unmute there. So yeah, and we ran some rough numbers on that. Obviously, there would be costs for equipment, supplies, training and such, but that would probably give us about five or six officers. And then, you know, typically you've got shifts. So you might have, you know, you'd have a lot of times where you'd have absolutely no coverage and no police officers on duty at all.
Okay, thank you. I think it's important to keep that in mind because I don't, I don't think it's that we are ignoring what is being shared with us. I think in fact, at the last council meeting, we encouraged the public's input into this process and we also said that we would be open to revisiting some of the, some of the budget items or some of the reform items that we think will happen with other cities and perhaps the state, which will even enable us to make changes here at the city. And so I'm just putting this into perspective and I'm not trying to dismiss anybody's concerns, but 6% would fund less than 10 police officers, if we're hearing this correctly, for a population of 75,000 residents. And so I would, I would be curious to know how the rest of our population would feel about, you know, perhaps having one police officer on duty per day because the call for services, you know, that would reduce significantly. And I just don't know if our community would, would have a positive response to that. So I just want to say that, yes, we are open to hearing what the community has to say. I am certainly, I welcome this moment. I welcome all the concerns that are being brought to our attention because guess what? These are concerns that I've been expressing for about 10 years. And I know that other members of the council have expressed concerns about how we can achieve greater sustainability. And then whenever any concerns have come to our attention regarding discrimination or, you know, any abuse of power, we certainly have taken action to address those issues through third-party investigators and, you know, so that there wouldn't be any conflict of interest. So I just want to assure the public that we welcome your input and because we adopted the budget at the last council meeting doesn't mean that we are not hearing you and that we don't regard your concerns. We had to adopt a budget to enact a $3 million cut to our police department and also to address a deficit which was created by the COVID-19 circumstances. And the city of Baldwin Park is not alone. We are seeing major impacts because of COVID-19 across the nation. So I think that we were trying to be responsible by giving the city a budget to work off of to immediately address the deficit that we are experiencing because of COVID-19. And also, we immediately enacted a $3 million, $3 million reduction to our police department. That said, we are very open to what is going to come from this dialogue. And I, and I call it a dialogue because I really welcome, you know, the input from the public on this. And this is something that we have tried to, actually, if I can speak for the mayor, the mayor and I both tried to express this through our, using our own money to share with the community so that the community would know not only how much of our general fund was paying for police services, but also how our police officer, our police officers are being compensated, which is, you know, we always want to remind our police department that they belong to the community, they belong to the taxpayers and that's where, you know, we all, we all serve the community and we are all accountable to the, to the taxpayers of this community. For, for as long as I've been on the council, when we've had an opportunity to appoint a chief of police, my concern and what I've highlighted has been, how is this chief of police going to work with the community? That's one of the reasons that I, I supported Lily Hadso, who was terminated by then councilmembers Susan Rubio, Cruz Baca, and Ricardo Pacheco. Same thing happened when David Salsedo was appointed. I appreciated that, you know, he was going to, and he was very active in the community. And he was terminated by then councilmembers Susan Rubio, Cruz Baca, and Ricardo Pacheco. Those terminations have had a major impact to our city. But still, we've continued to, you know, attempt to bring in chiefs of police that do hold the community in regard. And I think we've really started to see a shift, even starting with then-chief of police Lily Hadso. I only share that with you for a little bit of context, again, not to dismiss anybody. And, you know, a lot of these decisions that have been made over the last few years, and the reason why I mentioned the total city budget is because I do want the public to know where we're investing and to see that we are investing in preventive programs, infrastructure, public works, community development. And so that's why I mentioned the total city budget, which is $78 million. 25% of that goes to police services and then the rest goes to the other categories that I mentioned. Now, as far as the education, the city and the school district are two separate jurisdictions. And so if there are concerns regarding the funding levels of the local school district, then I would highly encourage you to contact the school board members. And that would, the president of the school board is Christina Lucero and I know she chimed in at the last council meeting. And so I would highly encourage you to contact the school district. The city has five different departments, including finance, community development, public works, public safety, which would include the police, and recreation and community services. And so that's what encompasses the city jurisdiction and our funding. So I think that that covers just about as much as I wanted to address. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Monica Garcia. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Vice Mayor Hernandez, thank you.
Thank you again. You know, I applaud the comments that both you have said, both Councilmember Garcia and Mayor Lozano. You know, again, just speaking to the facts and I think that's all we can do. Whether individuals want to understand the reasoning behind the facts, that's a whole other conversation that we could have, of course. You know, in regard to the audits that was released last week, you know, I see that as a roadmap to enhancing our process. And more importantly, you know, both myself and Councilmember Alejandro Avila were just appointed, or excuse me, were just elected back in November of 2018. And it's, you know, it's one of those things where an audit is to, provides, you know, areas of deficiencies or areas of improvements. And I think that's something in which I believe our whole council will look at it to improve our practices and policies to ensure that future audits, which I encourage them all, will show that we have improved and we will have little things to say about that moving forward. I know I've spoken with our CEO and it is something that we'll be discussing at further length at our next meeting, I believe, next Wednesday, so we can, we'll talk about that. In regards to, you know, defunding the police departments, you know, I've obviously have heard everybody for quite some time, including last week's meeting, but even before that, I've received calls and emails and talked to people throughout our communities and all of our stakeholders. You know, I've stated on numerous occasions, even prior to when I came on board, you know, in, in public, in the San Gabriel Tribune, that, you know, our police departments in a whole, as with all departments, have to, have to change, have to improve and have to do things better. Doing, doing the way things have been done in the past doesn't suffice for myself and it shouldn't suffice for our community. So as I've said in the past, and as I said last Wednesday, you know, making changes is something that, that is required, but we have to do these things in a smart collective way. And that does include having input from our stakeholders, which also includes our police unions, our city staff, our residents and our, you know, and all other stakeholders that we have. Shifting or defunding a department, regardless whether it's a police department or not, you know, in a short period of time, without having all the facts, understanding what the impact would be to our community. what the impact would be to our community, uh, would be irresponsible, in my view. Um, you know, I need to be able to understand, I think the rest of our community needs to understand what type of changes would be, would be occurring as a result of this. You know, I've seen the people's budget, um, or the people's, yeah, the people's budget for Los Angeles. Yes, there was twenty-four thousand people that provided that survey, but that was for the city of Los Angeles. We are talking here of city of Baldwin Park. Um, so that is a, it's a much different community, and anyone that tells me that our community is similar or just has uh, similar challenges that the city of Los Angeles has, uh, there are some, but the vast majority, we are a different, unique uh, city, and that's why, you know, that's why I advocate and love our city so much. Um, because we are different, because and because we have the abilities to talk to one another um, and see your council members, you know, out in the streets when we're at Walmart, when we're at the coffee shops and donut shops, uh, that's much more of a challenge when you see the city of Los Angeles. So, you know, again, we need to think about, you know, what the process looks like, what are the challenges, and what are the things that we're gonna be changing as we move forward? Um, I did, you know, introduce some motions last week in which be, in which we will, you know, hope, I, I hope that we'll have a dialogue, be, be able to ha- move forward um, to see what type of some, these reforms and re-imaging of the police department is. Um, you know, if someone asks me, you know, if we're gonna cut six percent, uh, cut our department all the way down to six percent, um, you know, I'd have to ask the question as, you know, what type of expectation of police services do they want? Um, besides just having no police officers. So again, you know, I offer the, I welcome the conversations. Um, and you know, this is not something that uh, that we are uh, sh- uh, shunning away from whatsoever, but it is something that has a, as a it requires much more dialogue than just, you know, one council meeting, as we've stated in the past. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I thank you very much for that, Vice Mayor. And that is, so at this point, uh, CEO, did you have any?
Um, yes, thank you. Um, I just wanted to, yes, talk about the item on the closed session agenda. It is for an acting police chief position. This is a temporary position. It is not a permanent position. Um, this is to fill a um, a, a temporary a, a position that's temporarily vacant. And um, when it is, of course, time for the permanent position, that will be a much longer uh, drawn-out process, which could take four to six months. Um, it is traditionally, um, it's allowed by state law, uh, the Brown Act, to conduct these interviews and make appointments and discussion in closed session. And it's of, often done, um, you know, to provide a fair and impartial process for uh, the candidates. Uh, and then the one other item I should mention is that we did um, place the entire line item budget for all departments is um, available at this point on our website. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. And Mayor, you know, since this might be fresh on people's minds, and I think somebody did mention uh, an item with regard to the state controllers' uh, review and audit. So if I, if I may, let me just take a few minutes to address that. I won't, I won't take too long, because I know that we have the item agendized at our next regularly scheduled meeting. And uh, if you know, it's definitely appropriate to have that conversation, but really quickly, I do want to let you, let our public know that we take, uh, you know, our internal processes and systems, you know, very serious, and want to make sure that everything is above board and um, you know, in compliance with our municipal law, state laws, federal laws. And so we did, we do welcome the opportunity to partner with government agencies, which we have done, um, you know, since I've been a council member, to review internal, um, like I said, processes, systems. We have an independent auditor every year, review. And so, um, you know, now we had the state controllers' office take a, a, a look at what we're doing here at the city. I just want to mention that the majority of our systems, um, you know, were found to be present and functioning, which is very good. And the review found no evidence of any fraud or abuse. And that would be, you know, per my expectations. Um, and there's no real follow-up to be had with the state at this point. However, we do appreciate the input that they provided, and will be taking those items up um, at the next council meeting. I think some of the items that they addressed in their report have already been uh, adopted and approved and improved within the city, which is great. Um, somebody did mention about the project that cost us about five hundred thousand. And we'll talk about it in depth next week. But that was, just so that you know, since I've been a council member and two, elected in two thousand seven, I've always looked at that site for housing. It's located in our downtown area. And we've been trying to revitalize our downtown, create a transit-oriented district, uh, you know, greater connectivity, and also spruce up, you know, the businesses for our residents. So as part of that vision, we were looking at housing. Now, at a certain point, there were three council members, uh, council, then council member Susan Rubio, Cruz Baca, and Ricardo Pacheco that explored the, the possibility of creating a park. I know I expressed um, concern with that. I believe the mayor may have expressed concern with that. I'm not sure, Mayor, I don't want to speak for you. But um, what ended up happening was the majority at that, at that time, well, there was a majority vote to move in the direction of looking at a park. Then it turned out that there wasn't enough funding. There would, that park would have cost us three million dollars, which we didn't have. And so I think upon receiving that information, uh, council member Ricardo Pacheco and the mayor, and I decided to move in the direction of housing once again, so that we could generate revenues uh, versus searching for three million dollars that we didn't have. And it was never part of my vision, but, you know, bottom line is that was that was a project that, you know, certain people on the council decided that they wanted to prioritize, they wanted to lead. Turns out we didn't have the funding for it, so we returned to the vision of, you know, revitalizing our downtown area with a mixed use and transit-oriented activities. So just wanted to share that. There's um, a lot that we'll be discussing at the next meeting with regard to the audit. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, council member Monica Garcia. And again, as she shared, the July first meeting, we'll go to the much more extensive uh, uh, information regarding some of these projects uh, for the city of Baldwin Park, so uh, stay tuned. Thank you. All right, so at this point, we're going to go ahead into the closed session. CEO, did you want to say anything before we go in, or?
Uh, no, that's fine. We'll just need to log off of this, um, and then log into the next meeting.
And for the audience that, that, that are, that are watching, we will now be adjourning and going into our closed session, and we'll be returning once the meeting has ended. So thank you very much. At this point, we're going offline.
Hello, Frank.
Hello, how are you?
Frank, you, you joined the wrong one. You join, you should join the closed session. This is a special meeting.
Ah, so closed session. I'll get off this one and.
Joining the closed session, okay.
All right.
Hey, Mark, come on, right? Mark?
Yes, hi, Bob.
Okay, good.
Yeah, you, Bob, uh, Robert.
Yes.
Same thing, you need to join the closed session, not this one. This one, this one.
I clicked on the link that you guys sent me in the email, and that's, that's what it took me to.
Okay, I can give you the closed session jo- the meeting ID and the password. You ready?
Go ahead.
Eight, four, one.
Eight, four, one.
Three, seven, seven, four.
Three, seven, seven, four.
Six, one, one, seven.
Six, one, one, seven.
The password will be seven, nine, one.
Seven, nine, one.
Seven, five, eight.
Seven, five, eight. And how do I get to the screen? It doesn't show me the screen.
What you mean? You, you just, you just find a zoom, you just click on the join the meeting, and put the lost meeting ID and password.
Okay, I'll, 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 uh, so I, I, I'll leave this screen and go back to your, go back to the link, click on the link, and then it should take me to.
Don't click on the same link, and you might go back to the same one.
Oh.
You just join the meeting, and they will ask you the meeting ID I just gave to you, the one.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thanks.
Okay.
All right, bye.
Bye.
That's definitely it.
What?
That's definitely the meeting. The password that they gave you.
Three five four zero two two. Zero eight three six two seven nine zero four five five. Thank you IT Director, I appreciate it.
Hi, good afternoon. This is Lord Ismore Alice. I'm the Chief Deputy City Clerk. You're actually on the wrong, on the wrong meeting.
If I would have told before, I'm just, what's the right link?
Okay, so, let's see. Do you have an email address I can send this to you? So that I can send this to you a little easier for you to log on. I could give you the code.
Okay.
So that, okay, so, um... Let's see.
I know there's a, the code eight three six six two seven nine zero four five five? Is that not it?
Hmm, no, so I have...
Oh, that's it.
The meeting ID is eight...
Hey, Lulu, Lulu.
Yeah.
We cannot speak the meeting ID and password on the YouTube channel. Everyone can hear.
Oh, everyone can hear. Okay, so let me, is there a way, let me have, I'll have HR connect with you.
Great, alright, thank you.
We'll have Shannon connect with you.
Thank you.
Thank you Mark for letting me know.
Well, okay, so, the report out of closed session, you gotta run back up and turn the PA system on for Granicus then, don't you? Do you have to wait till closed session's over, run up, turn on the PA system so Granicus gets the report out of closed session?
Granicus is from... From the...
From the PA system.
From that in inside, right?
Yeah, in the closet?
In the closet, right?
Mm-hmm.
Not from the PA, right?
No, it gets its feed from the PA.
But you will not be, nobody talked to from the PA. So...
Oh, well then it doesn't matter then. The whole thing's mute anyway then.
No, 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 no.
What, what do you want?
From the closet, that, that Granicus, the laptop.
The laptop is doing the meeting.
In the closet, right?
Yeah.
That one's still on, right?
The laptop for YouTube is still on, yes.
Mark, we can hear you.
Shannon?
So I tried to turn my camera on and it apparently logged me out and now I can't be let back in because it says the host will let you in, but I'm the host.
Let me run back to my office and I'll, I'll get you back in.
Not the closed session, right? Not the closed session, right?
...
We are still live.
Okay, Mark, everybody's gonna sign back in and then report out.
Okay.
Testing? We hear you.
Can you hear me?
Okay, go ahead, Mayor, we're live.
All right, so I want to say first of all, good evening and thank you for the closed session. I want to first of all thank all the participants. At this point, there is nothing to report, so I will go ahead and move for adjournment unless anyone has questions. The city clerk is here. And that is my motion to adjourn. Second by Vice Mayor, any objections? See you now, so move at this point. Good evening, viva ballpark. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, bye bye. Good night.
Let me go rush.